What devices are commonly used as VHF and UHF parasitic suppressors at the input and output terminals? Of resistor HF amplifiers? And I believe it's ferrite beads. Yep. Do you wanna take this one?
Oh, I'm, hold on, I'm. I'm actually, I'm not even gonna lie, I'm inside of a video game right now.
Okay.
You didn't, you didn't answer when I popped in earlier, so I just jumped in a, a quick match of Warzone.
I tried to, um, but my boom mic was raised, so I didn't, uh. So you probably didn't hear me, so. Um, this one is.
Sound good.
What advantage does series L? Pi L network have over series L? Pi network for impedance matching between the final amplifier of a vacuum tube transmitter and the antenna? I have no idea. I'm gonna say.
Yeah, I don't know.
A, greater transformation range. B, does not require a capacitor. C, greater harmonic suppression. D, greater efficiency. I'm gonna go with efficiency. Nope.
Harmonics?
Uh, the most common, one of the most common issues with transmitting into a multi-band antenna system is the creation of harmonic distortion that can cause cross interference with the outgoing signal. Using some sort of filter network just prior to the last stage of the application. Amplification process can suppress harmonics within that particular frequency transmission. Of these many different filtering networks, the PL. Sorry, the Pi L network is one of the most efficient, effective methods to suppress harmonics. So it is greater harmonic suppression, C. Let me know when you're done with your game and I'll, then you can start, we can start alternating.
Okay, okay.
Which type of detector circuit is used for demodulating? Uh, um, single sideband signals? This, A, discriminator? B, phase comparator? C, product detector? D, phase detector?
Is it B?
I'm leaning to C, but we can, we can try B. Phase comparator? Nope. Yep, it is product detector. And my guess is it's talking about a type of detector. So, and then the, the product detector is, um. It detects which signal we want. Who is responsible, who is responsible for the proper conduit? And. Let me restart that. Who is responsible for the proper conduit? Conduct, there we go. And necessary supervision during an amateur operating? Operator's license examination session. And that would be each administering VE, I believe. The options are A, the FCC, B, each administering VE. C, the VE session manager. D, the V, VEC coordinating the session. And B is correct. Each administering VE. How is the compensation of the oven oscilloscope probe typically adjusted? A, a high-frequency sine wave is displayed and the probe is adjusted for the maximum amplitude. B, a frequency standard is displayed and the probe is adjusted until the deflection time is accurate. C, a square wave is displayed and the probe is adjusted until the horizontal portions of the display wave are as nearly flat as possible. D, a DC voltage standard is displayed and the probe is adjusted until the display voltage is accurate. I don't know. I'm just gonna go with A.
Yeah, I don't, I should know it.
Yeah, I, it's been a while since I've played with oscilloscopes, so I'm not up on all that. This adjustment is equivalent to making the probe have the uniform attenuation over the range of frequencies to be measured. In passive probes, this adjustment is usually a small adjustable capacitor. And that tells me nothing. So. So the explanation doesn't help. Um, but, so I clicked them until I got the right answer, which was C. Sorry. A square wave is displayed and the probe is adjusted until the horizontal portions are nearly as flat as possible.
Tom.
What is? What was that?
What is subceptance?
It is A, the measure of efficiency of a transformer, the imaginary part of admittance. The magnetic impedance of a circuit and the ratio of the magnetic field to the electric field.
B, I think.
Which one?
It's B, I think.
You are correct. It is B.
Yeah, cuz you know. Admittance, subceptance, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's just the opposite of impedance, isn't it?
Um, I, yeah, impedance, it's the opposite of impedance or resistance.
No. I, I, admittance, admittance is the anti-resistance and impedance is anti, uh. Conductivity or some bolt.
Yeah.
Impedance, impedance is simply resistance with a time component.
On the oscilloscope question, just look at my webcam.
And I cannot, uh, there. Oh, yep.
I can least do patterns on it.
So, okay. Figure 11, do you wanna take this one?
I mean. One, one advantage. I mean, it's possible to transmit both upper and lowercase, I don't know. But is that ASCII eight or ASCII seven? Please, no, it doesn't, no. Uh, can these few introduction bits per character any other code? Probably not. Uses one character shift code to send the American special characters. Um, no, hmm. I, I will say C?
Yep.
What the hell? That's a stupid question.
What is, yeah, I'll read the question just in case someone's listening and not watching the screen. What is the one advantage of using ASCII code for data communications? Um, A, it contains fewer information bits per character than other code. B, it includes, uh, built-in error correction features. Uh, ASCII code doesn't do that. C, it is possible to transmit both upper and lowercase text. D. It uses one character as a shift code to send American special characters, which isn't accurate either. So C is the right answer. It is possible to transmit both upper and lowercase text. Sid, do you want, you ready or are you still playing your game?
Yeah, I'm still on my game.
Okay. Tom, do you wanna take the next one?
I, I've got no idea on the question.
Right, hang on. Tom, I'll give you a hint.
Wait, is that just positive logic?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
They're trying to trick you.
I guessed my way through.
Now, if you look at the answers, you got A, reverse logic.
Be back in a second.
B, was it assertive, C, negative, D, positive.
Now, is that, is that just like five volt high? That's positive. Yeah, zero volt low, that's negative.
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, you could have, assertive, you know, would be reasonable, but not tech, not correct. But you, at least it's sort of, sort of a bit logical.
Yep. What is meant by the terms extraordinary and ordinary waves? Extraordinary waves describe where long-skip propagation compared to ordinary waves which travel shorter distance. B, refracted rays and reflected rays. C, long path and short path waves. D, independent waves created in the ionosphere that are elliptically polarized. I believe it's D. Yep.
Yay! Okay.
Oh, is that just like weird polarization effects?
Yeah, it's, this is why I say, this is what makes the US amateur extra hard, is they ask you all kinds of weird crap.
Retarded questions.
Ever gonna hear anywhere else.
Yep. Uh, figure 11, um. What name, what's your name? So I don't have to, so I'm not.
Rob.
Rob? Okay.
Yeah.
You wanna read the next one? Take this one?
Hang on. What must the VE team do with the application form if the examiner does not pass the exam? Should they A, maintain the application form with the VEC's records? B, return the application document to the examiner? C, destroy the application form? D, send the application form to the FCC and inform the FCC of the grade?
It's gonna be stupid fucking managerial shit, isn't it? So they're gonna have to A. Gonna have to maintain the crap, stick it in a filing cabinet.
That would be my guess. No!
Nope, it's B.
Ah, and he just throw it away.
I knew, I knew what it was.
Ah.
Well. That's why I didn't answer, I wanted you guys to have a go.
It's just shit, isn't it?
They, they, basically, they don't do anything if you fail. They just hand the crap back to you and say you failed.
Yeah, I thought.
Fucking try again, no.
They still take the fifteen dollars for the VEC fee, so that's why I thought it might be A. Is that they needed to keep it for the records for, um.
Yeah, the only reason I know is that I did my general class at the RSGB, so they, another VE, another VE session was held. So I thought I'd have a crack at the, uh, the extra, and I went up and took Mike with me. Mike went past his general. And, um, I didn't quite, I squeaked and didn't quite make the extra, and they handed all my stuff back to me. So that's the only reason I knew.
Yeah, the answer is B, parameters that define the orbit of a satellite, by the way.
Correct, yeah.
Yep. What are the?
I knew that one.
What are the Capurian elements? And the answer is B.
Keplerian.
Keplerian, okay.
Keplerian, Kepler, as in Johannes Kepler.
Okay. The parameters that define the orbit of a satellite. And we already did this one.
Yeah.
Product detector.
Yeah.
Yep. What best describes a pull-up or pull-down resistor? A, a resistor that ensures that and ASCII. As, as, uh, I can't pronounce that very well.
Oscillator.
Oscillator frequency does not drift. A resistor connected to, uh, to an op-amp output that prevents signals from exceeding the power supply voltage. C, a resistor connected to the positive or negative supply line to, supply line used to establish a voltage when an output or input is an open circuit. D, a resistor in a keying circuit used to reduce key clicks.
Uh, a pull, a pull-down resistors. Yeah, I'm, I'm stupid, right? But it's like a, like a 10K in parallel with your, um. With your serial line, you know?
So it's there to provide a load when it's not connected.
To pull it down, yeah.
So you'd say it's therefore.
Does it reduce key clicks? Cuz, um.
Uh, you would use a capacitor.
Flyback on the, um.
You'd use a capacitor to work with that, wouldn't you?
Oh, that would smooth it out.
Yeah. So it's definitely not A. Absolutely, that's nothing to do with that at all.
Oh, C.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
There we go, it's, yeah, it's.
Power of deduct.
It's, it just, it stops, it stops something being completely open circuits, it just basically provides a little, a little bit of load.
You did answer the question straight up, didn't you?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't, I don't wanna jump in and jump over it if I already know. So give you guys a chance, have a go at it.
You wanna take this next one, Rob? Oh, we already did this one.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that, that makes sense that it's. Yeah, we did that.
Oh, God, I can't remember. What coordinate system is often used to display the phase angle of a circuit containing resistance, inductive, and/or capacitive reactants? Faraday grid, polar coordinates, elliptical coordinates made in a grid. Well, it's not delta.
No.
Uh.
Not B.
Definitely not B. Uh. So it's A or C. I, I'm gonna guess A, cuz, you know, that's to do with electricity.
What is a Faraday grid?
Well, I don't know, but Mi- Michael Faraday is the guy who's involved in electricity and magnetism. Am I right, Mike? Do you know what a Faraday grid is? No, Mike doesn't know either. I'm gonna take a definitely not B and D, C. I'm gonna say A, cuz at least the name is collected with electricity.
I've seen this one before.
No!
It's poor, it's.
Holocorns. Alright, okay.
I, I thought that was just. You know, your latitude and longitude.
What's the ex- exclamation for that one?
Um, it is the XY gridding, like, uh, you would see on a Smith, Smith chart.
Okay. Fair enough. Oh, I see the pole, oh, okay, yeah, I got you. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Pull it, yeah, I'll read it out in case someone's just listening. Polar coordinates are often used to display the phase angle of a, of a circuit containing resistance, inductive, and/or capacitive reactants. In a polar coordinate system, each point on the graph has two values, a magnitude and an angle.
Wait a second, is a, is a 50 ohm resistor a pull-up, a pull-down resistor?
I do not know. Um.
I was ask, I was asking Rob, who might know.
Pull up all there.
Yeah. Why are odd, why are sproggies?
I mean, it would pull up because it's keep, it's maintaining a thingy.
Odd order.
I, 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 I would have to remind myself of the specifics. What order?
Do you wanna take this one, Tom? Read it out loud.
Ah, why are odd order intermodulation products created within a receiver of particular interest compared to other, other products? A, odd order products of two signals in the band of interest are also likely to be within the band. B, odd order products are an indication of poor image rejection. C, odd order products overload the IF filters. D, odd order intermodulation produces three products for every input signal within the band of interest.
I don't think A is true. Uh. I think it's B. Odd order products are an indication of poor image rejection.
I, I'm inclining B as well.
Yeah. Nope, okay. No, okay, fair enough. There we go.
A third order product of two signals may be within the band of, of the receiver. Silly hint, the most likely answer is the only. The most likely answer is the only option that has the word likely in it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, there are a lot of ones like these.
Two answers, oh.
Which of the following describes the use of vestigial sideband in analog fast scan TV transmissions? Vestigial sideband provides high-frequency emphasis to sharpen the picture. The vestigial sideband carries the audio information. The vestigial sideband reduces bandwidth while allowing for a simple video detector circuitry. The vestigial sideband contains chroma information.
It, it's B because it's the audio sub, subcarrier, isn't it?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Is that right?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Whoa. I just checked with, I, I, I knew, and I just double-checked with Mike. Um. Cuz the audio is off, off freak, it's a different frequency, isn't it, audio?
It's a different, different carrier. That's right. No, never mind.
Yeah, it's a subcarrier. It's not, uh, it's not in the vestigial sideband, so it's, it's not B. Yeah, it's, it's not, yeah, it's, it. Yeah, yeah.
Mike used to do amateur TV in an amateur TV club.
Yeah. I, I, I knew this cuz I got bored and read up on it one day.
I, I still didn't understand. I just hit go on the transmitter and it worked.
Yeah. So it's definitely not B, I will tell you that. And if it's not B, it's probably not gonna be. Go on, Tom. Use, get, get that hamster rattling in the cage. You can do it, Tom. I believe in you.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't actually know.
Let's, I would guess, if it, if it's not, but.
Okay, it's not, eh.
I'll, I'll give you a hint.
Now, now I'm gonna look at a vestigial sideband.
I'll give you a hint, right? Is what's more complicated, an AM receiver or a single sideband receiver?
Oh, single sideband receiver.
Right, so a vestigial sideband transmission is narrower band than a full AM signal, but it can still be detected easily with a AM receiver, can't it?
Right.
So they use vestigial sideband to reduce the overall bandwidth.
Okay, and now it's another TV question.
No, this is, this is.
I know, it's the explanation, right.
NTSC signals are amplitude modulated.
Twice the same color.
It's just, it's, the short version is essentially, it's just enough like AM to make it work with an AM receiver.
It's not quite double sideband.
No.
Eh.
Uh, what digital protocol is used by APRS? I believe that's AX. It's either AX25 or PACTOR.
Second PACTOR.
Yeah, exactly. So if we, if we were to read, are, are you streaming this on YouTube or something?
I'm recording it for YouTube. I will stream it. I'll upload it to my.
Is it 2400 board?
If you read out all the answers, uh, we can explain why some of them aren't.
Oh. Um, yeah, the, the answers were AX25. B is 802.11, that's internet protocol, so, or the Wi-Fi wireless.
Ethernet.
Yeah, ethernet. PACTOR, I hear in relation, so I'm not, that's why I was thinking it might be the other one. And AMTOR, I don't know what that one is, but I haven't, it doesn't ring my bell.
As far as I remember, I mean AX25 and PACTOR are a bit like, they're kind of similar to like UDP. Is that they just, they simply send on, they don't, they have no, they don't try and coordinate, they just squirt the packets out. And if you, anything you lose, you lose. Whereas, um, I think AMTOR, AMTOR and the underlying infrastructure of 802.11.
It's got that QSL.
Yeah, you know, they send and they expect confirmations and stuff, so they're, they're reliable where those ones are like UDP, there's no, no expectation of reliability. If you miss something, you just send it again until it gets received.
Yep.
We've already seen this one, haven't we?
Yeah. Rob, you wanna take this one?
What does SAR measure? The rate of RF energy reflected from stationary terrain. Signal amplification rating, synthetic aperture ratio of the human body. The, the rate at which RF energy is absorbed by the body.
Synthetic aperture ratio of a human body. Is this a safety question?
Yes, I believe so. Um. I do not believe it is A. Um.
No.
Signal amplification rating, you ever heard of that one? No. I'm gonna say I believe it'll be C or D, and I'll lean on D.
I reckon, I reckon it's C because, because it'd be something stupid, wouldn't it?
Yeah, cuz, I mean, the human body does absorb RF, so. No, okay.
It's probably, it's probably D.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, as a note to anybody listening, the most strongly absorbed frequencies into the human body are from around 50 to about 250 megahertz, so, uh. If you wanna cook your, cook your, cook your turkey really quickly, put 1500 watts into a six-meter yogi.
So, yeah, the.
Specific absorption rate, well, you know.
SAR in this case stands for specific absorption rate. This is the rate at which the body absorbs energy from an electromagnetic field. The SAR is affected both by the frequency and the body part. Tom, do you wanna take this one?
He gave me the long one, right. If a station in a message forwarding system inadvertently forwards a message that is in violation of FCC rules. Who is primarily accounted for the rule violation? A, the control operators of all the stations in the system not authenticating the source from which they accept communications. B, the control operator of the packet bulletin boards station. C, the control operators of all of the stations in the system. D, the control operator of the originating station, will I know the answer?
So do I, it's an, it, this is an, uh, tech in general. It is the control operating of the originator station. Which of the following is poss, is a possible reason? That attempts to initiate contact with a digital station on a clear frequency are unsuccess, unsuccessful. A, another station you are unable to hear is using the frequency. B, the protocol version you are using is not supported by the digital station. C, your transmission frequency is incorrect. D, all these choices are correct. I'm gonna go with D, all these choices are correct.
Yes.
Rob, you wanna take this one?
What determines the P E P to average power ratio of, uh, single sideband phone signal? Uh, as a note, P E P means peak envelope power. Uh, A, amplifier gain. B, the degree of carrier suppression. C, the frequency of the modulating signal. D, speech characteristics. Okay, so. Well, it's, it's, uh, it won't be B. Uh, amplifier gain, well, I mean, that, well, I mean, that will affect average power, but I don't think that's quite what they're getting at. Uh. It's either C or D. Um. But I mean, I mean, D affects C, doesn't it? Uh, I'll go D. So it's gonna be C, yeah, yeah.
Yep, D speech characteristics.
Yeah, uh, I'll give you, I'll give you a note, is, is the. The richer and fuller your speech, the more power you'll produce with, uh, and an amplifier, this goes for AM as well. You know, because there's more to modulate, so, uh, when, when you're on sideband, anyone listening, use, use your DX voice, don't whisper into it. If you're talking sideband, don't whisper.
Yep.
And, and, and to convert. Hang on. What is it? I've now forgotten.
One I know.
To get average power, it's, it's, it's peak times point six three six. To get RMS, it's peak times point seven oh seven. And to get peak again from RMS, it's, uh. Uh, RMS times one point four one four.
Okay. Tom, do you wanna take this one?
What system matches a high impedance transmission line to a lower impedance antenna? By connecting the line to the driven element in two places. Space to fraction of a wavelength each side of each element center. A, the stub matching system. B, the gamma matching system. C, the delta matching system. At, uh, and D, the omega matching system. I know this one.
Okay, you can pick it.
It's B.
Gamma, yeah. No, all right.
Never mind.
Oh, is it Delta? Delta, that's it, yeah.
Delta matching system, an easy way to. An easy way to remember this is the two lines help form a triangle, or the Greek letter used. As a fourth letter in the phonetic alphabet, Delta.
Cool, all right, I learnt something.
Which, which amateur bands typically support long path propagation? Uh, A, sixty meters to ten meters, B, only, only one sixty to forty meters. C, only six thirty to ten meters. D, six meters to two meters. Okay, it's not D. I don't like.
Absolutely not.
I don't like B or C because, man, I wasn't, didn't mean to click on that. I don't like B or C because they use the word only, so I'm gonna go with A.
Uh, if, if you, yeah, it, it's definitely A, uh, if you look at, uh. Look at the B and C, because D, D, I mean, that's, that's V H F, so they're, they're not, never gonna get that far, ever, 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 ever.
Rarely, very, 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 very rarely, six meters or. Or, uh, you can, you can be heard long path.
Mate, yeah, extraordinary.
Once in every twenty years, sort of thing.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you look at the other two.
As, um, going all the way around the earth.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, if you point, say, say I'm pointing my antenna at Frank. And I, you know, I'm pointing, say I've got a, but, you know, I've got a dipole. You know, you've got a short path is the shortest distance, and then long path is going off the other side, the dipole going the long way around. Uh, uh, innocent, oh, it's a giveaway, if you look at B and C, also only thirty to ten. And people routinely do long path on forty all the time. And there was, it's forty to a hundred and sixty. When clearly it's, it's actually easier, at least at the moment, to long path on, say, twenty or seventeen.
It's, and, and you, you typically do see long path propagation on one sixty meters a lot.
Well, one sixty is not the easiest one to do it on, but it is, it is there, yeah.
You could do see it, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of, some of these are rules of thumb and not absolute laid down laws.
Yeah, it's, it's where, it's, it's like, it, it's, it depends on many, many, many factors.
Okay, Mike, I see you jumped in here, do you wanna take this next one?
Oh, no, I'm, I, I, I've got, that would mean I'd have to, uh, you know, do things. I'll let you carry on, I, 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 I'm, uh, you know, well.
Okay. Uh, Frank, uh, you up for, uh, reading the next question?
You see me read the chat, right? So as long as we all know what we're in for.
Hey, you're not, you can't be any worse than me.
What parameters evaluate distortion of the A F S K signal caused by excessive input audio levels? Uh, noise, or signal to noise ratio, baud rate, repeat request rate, R, R, R. And, um, intermodal distortion, I M D. I have no idea, um. Signal to noise ratio?
That would be my guess.
An offer hand.
May, maybe, yeah, I mean, let's go, go through the others as well, baud rate, that's the data rate, so.
Yeah, that has, that's to do that with, um, excessive audio level. Cause that will increase your bandwidth you're using if you try to send it faster, um. We, it, there we go.
Yeah.
D.
You're trying, you're trying to modulate it too much, that right, Mike? Yeah.
Rob, do you wanna take this one?
Uh, I'm gonna take a wild guess and say it's, uh. Polar, uh, polar coordinates.
Oh, yeah, we've seen this one already, okay. And. We've seen that one too.
Oh, man.
And we've seen this one too, which one, it was this one, do you take this one? Yep. And we've seen this one too, nope. I might have clicked the right one. Okay, this one's a new one. You wanna take this one, Rob?
Which of the following types of linear voltage regulator placed as a constant load on the unregulated voltage source? A, a constant current source. B, a shunt regulator. C, a shunt current source, D, a series regulator. Okay, anybody have any ideas? I, I know the answer, so I'm not gonna give it away, Mi, Mike, I take it, you know, you got that one? Yeah.
Um, could it have a, something to do with a regulator, B or D? I don't know what a shunt is.
Okay, shall we go through the others one by one?
And I don't think it's A.
So, A, what would A be regulating?
Well, if it's already a cur, constant current source, then it's not a unregulated.
Nope, it is regulated, it's just regulating. What is the fixed variable?
I'm gonna say.
It's regulating current, that means that the voltage is going up and down, so it's not a voltage regulator, so it's definitely not A. Eh.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, um.
And what was the answer to the last one, by the way?
Um, I M D.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah. Right, Tom. To, Tom, you, you come back, have you?
Yeah.
All right, I, I have a look at this here question, a quick, quick read of it, we, we've established by miracle of logic that it's not A.
So, sh, the, where I know shunts from is in a, in a off-grid battery. System where a shunt is used to, um. To read the current in, in and out of a system. That's where I know, know a shunt from. Um, and my guess is that that specific one is called a, a shunt current source. Which is basically it's reading the current. Um, so that's. So, yeah, so that's what a shunt does, is it reads, it reads.
That's one way you can use a shunt, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
So, it might be B, a shunt regulator, be, um, because it reads.
It's a class A, class A linear power supply.
Well, that's what it is, what a, that's another name for a linear voltage regulator, but what's it actually? Which one of these is how it implements it?
Yeah. So which one places a con, constant load? So, as well as in series. If you, if you were to disconnect the load, would a series regulator still be pulling current?
No.
So it's therefore.
C.
Nope, because that's a current source, not a regulator.
Oh, then, B.
B, there we go. That's, that's the type, that's, that's, that's the type of regulator, so that is a type of linear regulator. Cause it's, there's no switching going on, but it's quite commonly used in, um, in things like motorcycles use them because they're quite simple. Uh, which is why you notice if you ever buy a Honda, you'll burn your regulator rectifier out all the time. Cause it's, whenever you've not got a load on it, you're not running all your accessories, what happened, you'll burn your, uh, rectifier, you'll burn your regulator out. And then, uh, you know, so, but you, you end up burning your stator out because you're having to load it all the time to stop it burning the rectifier out.
Yep. Uh, Tom, do you wanna take this one?
I might.
Oh, good god, uh, isn't it a bit higher? I think it might go up to five watts. Except in some parts of Alaska, oh, no, no, yeah, yeah, okay. Except in some parts of Alaska, what is the maximum power permitted on the six thirty meter band? A, fifty watts P E P. B, a hundred watts P E P. C, five watts E I R P. D, one watt E I R P.
I think it's one, I think it's one watt on twenty two hundred meters and five watts on six thirty meters. Mind you, not that anybody follows that regulation, because I know someone in the States with a fifteen hundred watt amplifier for six thirty meters.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, but it's, it's, it's in that order, uh, uh, as a note to anyone listening, again, P E P, peak envelope power. E I R P is effective isotropic radiated power. Which means, essentially means, it's, it's, it's the complete radiated energy output of your antenna.
Mind you, it's actually quite hard to get five watts E I R P out of a six thirty meter antenna.
Yeah.
So, are you saying?
C or D? On six, on all those low band, those two ultra low bands, they're always E I R P, so it's one of the, one of the, C or D.
I believe it's C, and then within the, within the border of Alaska with Russia, it's one. I believe within eighty, eighty, within eighty kilometers of Alaska, it's one, but everywhere else it's five. Yep.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So, Tom, do you wanna take this one?
Amateur stations may not transmit in which of the following frequency sections? If they are lo, located in the contiguous forty eight states and north of line A. A, fifty three to fifty four mags. B, four forty mags to fif, four fifty mags. C, two twenty two mags to two twenty three mags. D, four twenty mags to four thirty mags. And it's D.
I think it's.
What is up?
I actually think it's B.
It's definitely B or D.
It's definitely D because Canada, um, uses the four twenty meg to four thirty meg region as their public safety band.
Okay, yeah, that's the, that is the, that's the reason, I didn't know that, um. Yep, you're right, for some reason I was thinking the bottom of the, um, seventy centimeters was four forty, so.
I would just, just think, everybody else in the world has given up the four twenty meg to four thirty meg region.
And just, and just, we use it, and so we, just the top part of the country can't, can't use it because, uh. Um, because they're close enough to Canada.
Yeah, it's being considerate of Kandakistan.
Yep.
Hello.
Hello, Steve, do you wanna take the next question? And we already did that one.
What?
Uh, we're, just a moment, we're getting to the, I'm getting to a new question.
We're doing the extra class test.
Oh, okay.
As a group.
Yeah, do you, you wanna take this question here? Read it off and then guess the answer?
Oh, all right, so what is the characteristic source switching voltage regulator?
Cool, all right, so what is the characteristics of a switching voltage regulator?
Uh, Steve, he's recording this for a video, if you could read it off loud and proud.
Uh, what is the, what is the characteristic of a switching electronic voltage regulator? It's generally less efficient than a lega- linear regulator, gives ramp voltage at its output. The controlled device's duty cycle is changed to produce a constant average output voltage. The resistance of the controlled element is varied in direct proportion to the line voltage alert. Uh, I believe it's C, but I'm pretty dumb, so.
Uh, I believe that is correct, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Hey, I'm not as stupid as I thought I was.
Yeah, a switch mode, what, effectively what the switch mode will do is it will switch the the power supply source on and off at a high frequency, and it'll switch it off at a different rate to, to regulate the output. That's how a switch mode works.
Yep.
That's the super simple explanation of a switch mode power supply.
What video is this for?
Um, this is, uh, study sessions that I put up on, um, my YouTube channel, um.
Cool, is it edited or, or does it just go out live?
Um, it, I'll trim like the front and the backs off of it, but for the most part, it's not edited, um, I don't have the bandwidth to do it live.
Yeah, okay, cool, yeah, cheers, mate, um, cheers.
What causes inter, intermodulation in, in electronic circuits? A, too little gain. B, nonlinear circuits or devices. C, lack of neutralization. D, positive feedback. I'm gonna try, uh, positive feedback. Nope. Any other guesses?
I reckon it's B.
B, I think.
Nonlinear products, yeah.
Nonlinear circuits or devices. And, yeah, that's.
Yeah, if we look at the, the other answers, what's A again?
A is too little gain.
Obviously, that, that would do the opposite, that would be, it won't be enough modulation.
Yep.
Uh, C is?
Lack of neutralization.
No, no.
Yep. Rob, do you wanna take this one?
Oh, god. What is the beta of a bipolar junction transistor? A, the switching speed. B, the frequency at which the current gain is reduced to zero point seven oh seven. C, the breakdown voltage of the base of the collector junction. D, the change in collector current with respect to the base current. Uh, I'll be honest and say I cannot remember.
I thought the, I thought the beta was, um, the gain.
I believe it is a bipolar junction transistor is like a switch. And I believe the beta is the is, I think, I'm thinking B, it's a frequency where the gain is, is, is we do, is dropped to a certain point.
Yeah, but, uh, the, the thing is, think, that question.
And I'm wrong.
With that answer. Is, um, that's a very specific number, that's, that's what I've said before. It's calculating the, um, the RMS from your peak value.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab and say A.
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Oh, I might as well go for broke, D.
Yep.
Hey.
The answer is the change in the collector current with respect to the base current.
Oh, okay.
The beta of, and the explanation they give is the beta of a transistor is the published ra- published ratio of the change in the collector current that results from a change in the base current.
Oh, common emitter current gain, okay.
Yep.
It was gain.
Yep, and this was the one, this was the one that you asked what the proper answer was, yeah, it's I M D, intermodu- much, intermodulation distortion. And we did this one as well. We had this the first week, so, um, Rob, do you wanna take this one?
Uh, wh- wh- I, 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 I remember this question. What is the radiation pattern of two quarter wavelength vertical antennas spaced at half wavelength apart and fed in phase? Is it A, cardoid? B, a figure eight broadside to the axis of the array? C, a figure eight end fire along the axis of the array? D, omnidirectional? And I honestly cannot remember.
I thought it was like a big balloon.
I can't even remember what cardoid is.
Cardi- no, cardioid is, is like a big direction.
Like a beach shape, yeah.
Upside down heart.
Upside down heart, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I reckon it is.
Yep. Nope.
Nope.
Nice roll.
What's the correct answer then? For our own edification.
Um.
Figure eight broadside to the axis.
Side.
I.
Okay.
Okay.
The answer to the other, the, the answer to the other one we had was cardioid, so I'm wondering if.
Is, is it, is it, oh, no, my thinking is, because usually when they do like a, like a four square, they place the elements slightly closer to change the pattern. Have more gain in a certain direction.
Yeah, I think the question that we had before was two quarter, two quarter wave length vertical antennas spaced out a quarter wavelength. And this one's a half wavelength.
Yeah, broadside, so.
At least that was my understanding of a four square, but I could be wrong.
So I just, um, I just found out that issues I thought were in software were in hardware and they came a lot easier to fix.
That's good.
Sorry, I'm working on a project right now.
Tom, do you wanna take this one?
Yep. Where on the load line of a class A common emitter amplifier would bias normally be set? A, at a point where the load line intersects the zero bias current curve. B, approximately halfway between saturation and cutoff. C, where the load line intersects the voltage axis. D, at a point where the bias resistor equals the load resistor.
Can you guys shut up, Mike's girlfriend?
Any thoughts?
I think D.
Honestly, I can't remember, uh, uh, B or D, I can't remember. Uh, I think it's B, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, it is eight o'clock, um, so I'm gonna call it a night and probably head over and watch, um, ham radio two point O's, uh, live stream. Um, so, thank you, thanks everyone for participating, and I hopefully will be doing it probably the same time next week, if anyone is interested in joining me again, so.
Okie dokie.
Being an absolute pleasure, mate.
And, and hopefully next time, Sideboomer will actually join in, because he needs his extra.
Yep, and hopefully next time I won't be on my fifth cone and I'll actually know what these things are.
Hey, half, half of them I don't know either, so we just, we just guess and we, we learn together, so, sounds good.
Yeah, I, g'day, Mike, how you going? On the mic.
Take care.
Hello, bye.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.